Okay. Welcome to the May 30th School Committee meeting. We call the meeting to order. We don't need a motion, do we?
Nope.
All right. We have the minutes for the May 1st meeting. Any questions about those minutes? Revisions? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from the first?
Seconded.
Okay. Great. Adjustments to the agenda, we have a few. We'd like to move 4C, Brian's presentation up first, so you can go to the sports banquet. Then we'd like to add the MASK Association of School Committee Summer Institute, just as an item, to number seven, School Committee Reports. We'll add that. And we'd also like to add a student petition after 4D, the current 4D Grade 3 presentation.
And I'm sorry, I may have just not heard. I had a first and a second. Did you take a vote on the minutes?
Oh, I did not. Okay. I can go back and take a vote. So if the mayor motioned it, pause, seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's the minutes. Okay. So those are the three adjustments to the agenda. Any others? Okay. All right. Presentation and discussion items. We're going to move C, Revision of Hopkins Academy Program of Studies.
This was emailed to you separately?
Really the page that explains the change. This was a change that was put together over the course of the year in collaboration with department chairs, in consultation with their staff over the course of the year to make some refinements and some adjustments to how independent studies or assistantships are approved, teaching assistantships. We really wanted to be able to identify students who had a special skill. We did some research into other programs of studies, both in Massachusetts and in other states, and they found some language for teaching assistantships, which I believe they adopted from the Wellesley Public Schools, that while we have students who will work over at the elementary school from time to time, that's a specific early childhood education program, and students can go over and work as teaching assistants if they have a great track record and they're desired by the teacher to come down and work with students. And often those students have the intent of either working as counselors or going on to work in special education or in education field, in particular either early childhood or elementary education. Here, we haven't had a great deal of consistency in the application of students. Reaching out to particular staff members as a result, it puts a great deal of pressure on individual students, can put a great deal of pressure on teachers, and there are some inequities in the number of students that some teachers have while other students, other teachers don't have any other students. And there are also some cases where some students have less than rigorous schedules because they have more than one block worth of either independent studies or teaching assistantships. The idea was also to refine the, and there was in the previous Program of Studies, no course description for the teaching assistantship, so we just added that description adopted from the Wellesley Public Schools, and that course will be graded as pass/fail. The organization assistance will also be pass/fail, much like teaching assistance. Somebody who, say Susan Duncan, who's running the equestrian club, has had organizational assistance assist her with the organization of that club. April Camuso, who runs the school newspaper, has typically had two assistants, and they function as senior editors for the paper. Yearbook and other programs, extracurricular programs, they can make use of that leadership opportunity by identifying those students. And then independent studies, we just refined the contract, which is the only thing that I guess is a revision, actually, to the Program of Studies, is just minor changes in the contract that exists in the current Program of Studies. And so that's basically, it was not necessarily a very long process, but we wanted to get all of our course registration done, and we don't typically begin the process of accepting these until the month of June anyways. So as we turn towards Step Up Day, some students might begin the process now of reaching out to particular members of the faculty just after graduation, so the timing is good.
It's a short window of opportunity, June till, what about June 15?
Yeah, some students may put some together over the summer as well, and come in within the first couple of days of the ad drop period with a proposal, and there's the opportunity for students to do that as well. They'll typically reach out to teachers over the summer by email, or let them know that they'll be passing in the contract when they return, so that they have the time to put something together that's meaningful and appropriate.
And what kinds of numbers do we see in terms of numbers of students engaging in any one of these over the years?
Well, this year, this year, we probably had more than we had in, it wasn't the, than we've had in the past, and it wasn't the total number of students. Again, it was, the issue was the inequity. There were some teachers who had as many as six students, four or five within a given period, and that was more of a result of the need for us to refine the course schedule to make sure that students were fully scheduled in all the courses that they were able to take, and then looking for the upperclassmen into their options as far as virtual high school courses and what they were looking to take to diversify the opportunities that they had to study, things that we might not have here as standard courses. So, once we completed that process, it made sense for us to then put this language together and bring it forward to the committee so that we could get the overall numbers down and have them be more equitable.
Just for my own information, how do we go about alerting students that these opportunities are available?
Well, we keep it in the Program of Studies, post the Program of Studies online, email out the Program of Studies, and then students, it's only for 11th and 12th graders that these courses are typically available anyways, so as they go in through their individual counseling sessions, as well as in the course of the guidance curriculum, they're shared there.
Do they register for this ahead of time? Like, they select this as a course?
No.
No?
No, it comes after the course selection process so that they can get all of their prerequisites down, their graduation requirements, advanced placement courses and other things that are going to make them more competitive for post-secondary application process before they begin the process of then looking at, okay, you know, I have an opportunity here to conceivably jump in with a teacher and, you know, engage in a leadership opportunity in something that I'm interested in doing. So they'll go and see that teacher first, and then put together a proposal with that teacher, and then go to the guidance counselor from there, and hopefully get all the signatures that they need.
To what extent do you ever see a student taking up a truly self-directed learning opportunity? Perhaps it's not like a getting, you know, slotted into a class book or a newspaper kind of role, or interested in education, but rather really interested in a specific field and want to invest their time in that area?
Well, one of the areas that was actually brought up, and we looked at the possibility of running, earlier in the school year, of running a high school science fair course, but we don't have somebody with the experience in the high school licensure, so the independent study criteria provides us the opportunity to run a course like that, so that some of the students who have had great success in the science fair at the 7th and 8th grade level and have continued on into the high school will have that opportunity to engage in that through the independent study process. In addition to the fact that they don't necessarily have to do it, it clarifies that they don't necessarily have to do it during the school day. These can be credits that they could gain and experiences that they could gain in their own time with a faculty sponsor. So we're hopeful that the clarification will result in more students taking advantage of opportunities to develop something meaningful rather than just having a placeholder in their schedule, so.
So this is an action item. Any other questions on this? Okay, so I see it under 8D. We would need to vote.
If you'd like.
Is there a motion for this?
Motion to approve this new, is it a, it's a procedure or amendment to the handbook?
Revision of Program of Studies.
Yes.
Permission to approve of the Program of Studies. Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, next CPA funding request. I'm sorry, budget FY '17. Can't skip that.
You received a rather extensive narrative in addition to an Excel workbook. What's changed in the Excel workbook from the last time that we looked at it? And I'm trying to think, I think that was when we had new school committee members here, perhaps, or perhaps it was in March. And I can't remember if you all had been elected the last time we looked at this, but you voted the bottom line of the budget, and we were waiting until after town meeting to finalize the budget and then to see where we were with revenues. So it almost felt like you were approving a deficit budget the last time, because we did have a gap. So we've closed that gap with the revenues, and I'll draw your attention to that and certainly take any questions that you have about any part of the narrative. But the very last page of the workbook, the area highlighted in yellow, so local contribution did not, it changed from FY '17, but it did not change from what we had originally heard from the town. We did, because we have additional circuit breaker revenues, so circuit breaker are the revenues that we get from the state to offset special education costs, and we were eligible for additional circuit breaker revenue this year because we incurred a considerable increase in special education costs this year, so we applied more circuit breaker revenue. Nursing and health grant, that is the same, Title I and Title II-A, the same that we had projected. The 240 grant is the same. There is slightly more money being applied in school choice to the budget, and there had been a lengthy discussion, and this was before Keith and Tara, you were on the school committee, but I think that Tara, you may have been here when the parents presented, and so you probably heard the school committee conversation, but the school committee was very clear that you wanted to apply more school choice money to make the additional fourth grade happen, knowing that that position is essentially a one-year position, because next year we'll have two grades with three classrooms, but the sixth grade is one of those grades, right? So that there was an understanding we would apply more school choice money, because the sixth grade, when the sixth grade graduates, you'll only have one grade with three classrooms. So that changed slightly, and you are still within your, what your policy dictates around school choice with the estimates that we have right now. And after July, when we have the final July one, where we start with school choice money, we'll bring that to the school committee. And we applied more pre-K revolving funds. The 391 grant is less from last year, but that didn't change in our first estimation. That grant is going to be phased out entirely within two fiscal years, a total of three years, so over the, two years out from FY '18, and then 262 did not change. So you don't have a gap anymore in the revenues.
So Annie, so on the vocational tuition?
Sure.
Is that both increased, students going to vocational school and increased cost?
The cost did not increase. It was the number of students that increased. I don't think it increased. We budgeted, actually, it stayed the same. We had budgeted at 16,6, and I think it's actually 16,728.
Yeah, we tweaked it to the exact amount.
So the exact amount was $128 per student or more, but the increase is because we have 11 additional students that stress interest in vocational education for next year, and we only have one graduating from our current group at Smith Vocational.
And is that a definite that all of those kids who enquired are going to be going, or is that still in flux?
Right now, I think the last time that I checked, there were, all had submitted applications. I think there were only two that were not fully registered and enrolled, so this presumes that those two are going. They did submit applications.
So it was 11, you said?
An increase of 11, not 11 totals.
Right.
We're at 34. 24 now, one to graduate, plus 11, we're at 34.
Okay.
And any reason, I'm sorry, were you going to go back to the beginning?
I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I wasn't going to go through any of them page by page, but I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can go through anything you'd like.
School choice students decreased from 98 into 97.
So we had 18 graduate in June of this past year, and we have another, I think, 12 school choice students in our current graduating class. I could be slightly off with that. Now, that 79, so when it says we decreased from 98.47 in FY '16, because they credit them for the month of enrollment, that's why it's not a .47 of a student, it's when they enter the school. And the 79 in FY '17, I've mentioned to the school committee that actually right now there are 88 school choice bodies enrolled, but I purposely, anytime I refer to data in here, I take it directly from either the Department of Elementary and Secondary's Education's website, their most recent numbers, so their numbers will catch up with ours, but I purposely, purposely want people to be able to find where the data came from. And so you'll see in other charts, I refer to the district analytic review tool, or the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, or Department of Labor, or Division of Local Services, DLS, for data. So there's actually 88 children. We won't get credit for 88. If the department had us at 79, and I think the 79 is from, let's say, December, and we're now at 88, we're not going to get credit for a full 88, because they enrolled halfway through the year, so we'll get a portion credit for that. So we are seeing a decrease in school choice. That is somewhat to be expected, because something that Huma and I discussed this morning, and Huma has, which may come up in our CES report, the Collaborative for Educational Services provided the folks on their board with a lot of data around enrollment across the region. So you see declining enrollment and declining birth rate for all of Western Massachusetts, and a proliferation of choice, which I talk about a bit in the narrative. So talk about two issues that are really at odds with one another, fewer students and more choices.
Yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question? And it's the second to last bullet there.
Sure.
So you talk about, there's mention of using a third-party provider for SLPA services and bringing ABA support in-house through that ABA tech position?
Yep.
Is there still going to be BCBA support?
Yeah, so that's not being touched at all. So we have currently in-house, and I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you, Keith, because one clarification, that the most efficient approach, so that will either be reducing the amount of point time currently with an SLPA employee or utilizing a third-party provider, whichever is most efficient and makes the most sense in terms of meeting student schedules. We currently share the position of a board-certified behavior analyst or BCBA with Granby Public Schools. There's nothing changing with that employee being employed in-house. This is in addition, but we currently, we currently use a third-party provider service for ABA support, and we're going to hire somebody and have that as our employee rather than using a third-party provider. So we're not touching BCBA services, we're not taking those away, we're not, this is bringing in-house something that supports services, so this isn't a BCBA. We'll keep the BCBA we have, and then we'll have a support position.
And the, I'm assuming that the reduction of the ESP for pre-K is due to enrollment?
Right, so it is due some to enrollment, and also we are trying, the school committee, I believe, again, prior to you all coming on, last year approved an increase, and approved an increase this year, but it's still, we're working hard to try to make this operate a bit more like an enterprise fund. So an enterprise fund would be a fee-for-service fund. It will never, it'll never completely operate like that, because the town is required, which I know you know this, but for the benefit of the viewing audience, the town is required by law to provide early education for any child who's found eligible for that. So we're responsible financially for children age 3 through 21 who are eligible for special education services. If we did not have a pre-K program, the town would be financially responsible for tuitioning them into another pre-K program. But other students who come in, it should operate a bit like fee-for-service, so we should almost come out even, we don't, kind of like lunch, we don't. So there are some enrollments, and looking at the enrollment, we said, all right, we could, and we, Chris and I met with the director of the preschool program, and she was comfortable with a reduction of one education support professional. We won't have to technically do a RIF or reduction in force, because we had somebody leave, and we simply just won't fill that position. So we don't need to riff anybody, they would just be moved to another ESP position.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
So Annie, is the action tonight to approve the total operating fund?
The total, yeah.
Given we had pre-approved it before the meeting as a kind of a placeholder?
Yes, yeah. So just a part of it is because the bottom line, I don't believe the bottom line has changed.
I don't believe so either.
No, I don't believe the bottom line has changed, but what, what has changed is the amount of school choice, and the school committee always has to approve, so, and the school choice amount in there, the understanding is you're voting the bottom line, and that school choice amount is not to exceed. We may be able to use less school choice than that, but if we needed to use more, we'd have to come back to the school committee.
Okay. Any questions before we move forward on the motion?
Just a comment, you know, just looking at some of the census. Yeah. I started to see more and more public schools advertising. I think we've got a good product to sell. We should think about how we might be do that strategically.
Yeah, we talked about that a couple meetings ago, when we approved the school, the open seats, the number of school choice seats, right? That we would approve, that there's quite a few, and so how can we leverage, you know, all of the positives, including the recent approval of the course and personal, I'm going to call it personal finance, but I know it's not just that. Things like that that are, you know, attractive. But I agree, I mean, if there are forums to be able to do that without, you know, taking out an ad in the Gazette, but I mean, really actually reaching.
So the school committee in the summer, I can't remember what summer, but you all got together, and we have a strategy document that goes through 2018, and it might make sense to try to find some time, doesn't have to be a lot of time, but to set aside some time specifically for looking at where do we want to be in three to five years, and that is probably a good conversation to have there. That would, it would have to be an open meeting, it would be an open meeting, to set some recommendations for goals for the district as a goal, as a whole, you may want to, and when we, when Heather talks about the Mass Association of School Committee Summer Institute, the school committee may want to set goals for its own, like what it wants to do. But part of the conversation had been, how do we do this in a way? We had some school committee members who felt very strongly that they didn't want to participate in this kind of pirating from other districts, right? And so it's, I'm just bringing up what other school committees had, members had discussed before. I think it's an important conversation to have, so how do you, how do you do that in a way as a, as school committee or recommended, that's also true to your values around where you stand on certain policy positions and other things, but, but I would agree that there's plenty, I'm happy to get the word out about what we're doing, as we've seen, encourage a Gazette to put these things, and then do we want to go the next step of advertising? There are districts that take out radio ads and say, come to us for school choice, and yeah, I'm happy to say, stop here on the way.
You've got a billboard on your building.
That's true, yeah.
How are we in relation to filling the seats that we had approved, the open school choice seats?
So I believe right now, we actually, I think for all of the grades where, we still have open seats in kindergarten, we still have open seats at Hopkins Academy, and I think for the remainder of the elementary grades that we may have filled those up, and that's pretty common. We don't open a ton of seats at the elementary. We have a very small kindergarten class next year, so we do, I believe we still may have some seats open there. It's Hopkins where the challenge is, and not because we do, you can see from some of the enrollment changes by cohort, that children come into Hopkins after 9th grade, but we have these big drop-off points. So the charter options, particularly because we have two highly specialized charter options nearby, you saw the charter enrollments, most of them are going to a dual-language immersion program or a performing arts program, and then the vocational option, so it's hard to recoup those seats entirely. We do pick children up in grades 10, 11, and 12, but not at the rate, it doesn't completely offset all the choices that are introduced at those grades.
So maybe in a future meeting, as we do talk about, and I think that's a good conversation around goal setting and future topics, just even taking a look at, some of those open number seats seem ambitious. I mean, I remember when we walked through it for Hopkins, that we can, let's come back to that, even if it's in August or September, when we know more fully what the true picture is. Just to understand, okay, we had set this goal that would get us to having, you know, not over-stacked classrooms, but full, a whole set of classrooms.
Right.
Okay.
And another thing that I'm happy to present to the committee, there are districts that encourage and invite students from other countries, international students, to come to their high schools for a year. There are services that assist with that, and, and then they're required, even by Massachusetts general law, to pay the tuition of the school. They need to pay the cost of their education. So I think Hopkinton, out kind of middle-ish, almost east-ish of the state, I believe that they do that rather successfully, and it has created a revolving fund that has helped them with their budgets, and there are other schools that do that as well.
Annie, you've mentioned this ever since I've known you.
Yeah.
I think it's an interesting idea. What would it take to explore it further?
So one, I think it would take consensus from the school committee, because there was a range of opinions about the extent to which we want to look at public education as a, the extent to which we want to look at students as a source of revenue. So previous school committee members have had very thoughtful and cogent opinions and raised some good questions about what's the why behind this, and if a student is strictly viewed as a source of revenue, that felt kind of, mm, for, it didn't feel right for some school committee members. So getting clear, I think what it would take is, I'm happy to do research, I have been doing more research, I sent a proposal out to UMass to see if there would be, in higher education, if we could find partners that would help us with the identifying families, boarding, people who have a lot of experience in this, right? They have whole departments in higher education devoted to recruiting, retaining, and boarding international students. So starting last summer, I have reached out to UMass, to five colleges, to identify people who could help us if this is the direction that we wanted to go, and at least give us technical assistance, and I've identified some organizations that assist schools with the recruitment of students. But I certainly don't want to act unilaterally in this. I'd want the school committee to say, yep, this is a direction we want to go in, and this is the reason we want to go in that direction.
So when I think about a program like that, I think it's really no different from even public higher ed, where you might have many students on sort of financial aid or supported, and then some who are paying full freight and some who are, you know, and that full freight is quite expensive. I wonder what it would look like to just undertake a pilot, might want undertake a pilot that wasn't committing fully to, you know, years and years of a program, but rather, what would it look like to have, you know, three students per grade, or just, you know, a certain number of grades, maybe it's just the middle school or just the high school, something manageable that you could get your feet wet and see.
or just the high school, something manageable that you could get your feet wet and see what it was like and what impact it had on those schools and whether, because I have a feeling that once those students are in, they're, they're not necessarily, you know, we don't look at them with dollar signs, we look at them as a people. And, and a person who's probably enriching the experience of being at Hadley, bringing their international multicultural experience. So.
I thought you had that it would be good to hear about, but beyond, okay, yes, there's the money aspect, but here's, you know, in Hopkinton or another district, what these students in this program have added. And I agree with you wholeheartedly, like kind of bringing in that international aspect here, that, I mean, our own kids, you know, being able to interact and be friends with and socialize with others from other cultures and other backgrounds, even if it is just for a year, is huge.
I am, I think there are many, many advantages. There are certain regions of the, sorry, if I may just qualify, by, by saying pilot it for a year, but maybe even like commit to just that cohort of students, like don't commit to another, because once you take them, you almost want to see them through to the finish line, right? It wouldn't be fair just to say you're here for just a year, although maybe it would be.
Some families, maybe that's all that they want.
Right.
Is a senior year in the United States or a junior in the United States. And I think there are many advantages for our students and for our community, for any community, for our students to interact with students from around the world. There are regions of the world that I would be particularly interested in recruiting students from, because I think that there's a tremendous value to dispelling perhaps with stereotypes or breaking down certain walls. And there's a tremendous advantage, depending on where students come from, of learning about education in the United States. I mean, there are, but even in Western, what we would refer to as Western democracies, the idea of inclusion in special education is still considered a novel concept. I mean, right now in Quebec, there's, I don't know, Pat, if you've read some of the articles about this, but they're looking to go to a full inclusion model. And you have teachers and, and many people absolutely up in arms at this idea, something that now we just take for granted. And so having students experience the value of going to school with peers of varying interests and abilities and people who are different, I think what, not only what they would bring, but what students would then be able to take back in terms of their public education experience would be really powerful. So I am happy to bring to a summer school committee meeting some ideas, what districts are doing it, and what it looks like, what those models are, and what their experience has been.
I would be happy, and I wholeheartedly agree about the educational experience that it would provide for both our students and for the students coming in abroad. I think what I, I almost, while I can see the financial benefit of it, I'd really want to make sure that there's also a discussion on how we still bring in those numbers and really look at how these programs work, because if it is something that's just a one-year-at-a-time thing, is it something that's reliable? So I don't know that, I, without knowing more about how these programs work, what the procedures are, I don't know that I, I want to explore other avenues on how to bring in students, particularly to Hopkins, in addition, and not have this be the only thought out there, kind of have other avenues, like explore other areas while including this and figure out more about it, still be sure to look at other ways that we can.
And maybe it is a multi-prompt strategy.
Right.
Right, which is not either this or that, but rather a little bit of this, like a pilot, and, and I agree, I don't, I don't know that a one-year thing, I think we really would need to accept a cohort and take them over the finish line, but really only commit to accepting one cohort until we know that a pilot was successful after that first year of experience, understanding the costs and the impact, and, and then make a go-no-go decision on a second or third year after, after that. But like in parallel, I know, Annie, you have some interesting ideas, we've done some great telling of our stories through the media, it's hit or miss what they pick up, what's hot for news at the time, and what they actually come to unearth. But you have some interesting ideas about how we could tell our own story.
Yeah.
In other ways, can you, can you comment on some of those?
Sure, so I was talking today about my desire to start a blog and try to publicize not only the work that we do with students, but also start talking about our identity as a community. I often refer to Hadley as a community that cares, there are many examples of that, that cares for its members from, you know, cradle to the council on aging. And there's a lot of evidence around the kinds of investment that Hadley residents are willing to make in, in all of their citizens. And so, as I said, being very purposeful about, I want to be, if I undertake any sort of social media project, I want to make sure I'm going to follow through and it's going to be high quality, and I purposely tried to pick something that didn't have an expectation of kind of daily updates. So if you have, I do have a school Twitter account with eight followers, as some of you know. Please don't go looking for it, because I don't, there's an expectation of regular posting. And one of the drawbacks with that is that to post right in the moment, I constantly have to check to make sure that children can be photographed, that they can be, so I, it's not as easy for me to just go about snapping pictures and putting them up on social media. So using a blog, connecting it from the email, encouraging people to go there, and getting people to really tell their stories, their experiences, and some of that happens in that weekly update, right? So this last week, that, that was a great note from a UMass student back to one of our Hopkins teachers. So how they benefited from this experience, and not though just students, how, how the faculty feels about their work, we have faculty who are passionate and enthusiastic, dedicated, and really love what they do, and care deeply about the children here in this community. And I believe we have parents who care well for each other, and that can be really attractive as school choice, to be a place where you feel like you're a part of a parent community, that you are supported in this hard work called parenting, that you are always valued, and that we're here to help each other, help our children learn and do better.
Yeah, I really loved hearing that idea, I fully support that. And I think that creating short pieces like that would make it easily shareable by people who care about getting that word out, and, as well as people in the community who want to put a spotlight on what it is you're talking about. So I think it becomes a very easily shareable tool that can get out to the surrounding communities and raise the profile of Hadley and its school choice possibilities, I'm sure.
So I'll definitely bring back information, I just want to temper the, the expectations around it, what a cohort just around the international side might look like. So starting small would be very, very small, because in this case, you also have to identify homes, families in the community who want to be kind of surrogate families for a year. So that's a whole nother piece, that wouldn't be a large, I would really want to make sure we had everything in place and that it went well for a year in terms of caring for other people's children for a year, and then building off of that. But it is something that at least one district has told me has been very beneficial, also in terms of their budget.
That's actually, that's, leads to the comment that I was going to make, was when you come back with data on the other, on the Hopkinton, like to have some information on what the community support has looked like for these children as well, to make sure that we look at them outside of just the school day.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, happy to do that.
So going back to the action item, is there a motion for the overall budget?
A motion to approve this budget.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. Do we need to approve the specific school choice numbers, do they change?
No, just toward the end of the year, we, if something's going to, if for some reason we needed more than that, we would come to you before that point. And then just like we did recently toward the end of the year, we'll ask you to do that vote, start moving money.
Great.
We have a better picture of revenues throughout the course of the year.
Okay. Great, next CPA funding request.
Oh, Mr. Pfeifer, can I put you on the spot, even though it's up in presentations?
Sure. We had a great meeting on the athletic fields development here for Hopkins. These are the lands that are out there that are currently under agriculture that are ours to use, and the town purchased a while ago with the assistance of the trustees, thank you. And so we've had an old plan on how to develop them. We received $15,000 of funding from CPA, thank you, to revise the plans and itemize the costs a little bit more specifically, and to break it out into more manageable phases. And so we had that revised phase in front of us, and we met the other night here, it was on the 17th, we had a good showing, we had some great folks from the community that are very interested in experience in fields development, and from the trustees, and from Parks and Rec, so we had a really great team. And the, and Peter Wells from Berkshire Designs, our designer, came up with the next phase, the master plan. So it's attached during the notes, and basically the first phase gets us quite a bit of, focuses on using that existing agricultural land, converting that to another softball field and to a multi-use field, like a soccer field. And the second phase will redo some of the other, the baseball and soccer fields, but that's, that's down the road a bit. And so the itemized cost, still just an estimate, right, is, is pretty significant. It was upwards of over $500,000. But what this includes are some key things that we went around and around with on the team to see, are they really essential? Things like irrigation, so putting in irrigation. The recommendations we got from, from the experts, folks like Dan Markowski, who's the head of maintenance, manages the fields at UMass, are that irrigation's essential. If you're going to invest in something like new turf and new fields, if you don't put in irrigation in a couple of years, the investment's really soured, so it's worth it. And another thing we talked about is a paved walkway, which will go around the circumference of the fields, basically something accessible by the community, and something that'll allow handicap access, something that'll allow emergency vehicle access. So really something that we think is essential, but also provides a benefit to the community as well, so, but that doesn't come at a cheap price, that's over $100,000 as well. So all told though, I think we've got a great concept of how to, to put this stuff into best used as quickly as we can for the first phase. And what we're talking about now, parsing it out into some of the specific next steps are bringing it to you all today as just a first run. You can see here the, the notes from our meeting, thank you Annie for putting those together. First discussion and review here today with the school committee. Do a further review at the June meeting and look for a vote in July.
Although I could have that if there weren't recommendations, there's nothing to prevent us from getting ahead of schedule.
Okay.
So just, so the school committee knows, as soon as you're comfortable with the proposal, which is included in there, what CPC would get is not our notes from the meeting, but the actual funding request form, a copy of the itemized cost with the indication that we would be deferring the fencing in the first phase, and the project summary, thank you, Mr. Pfeifer wrote this, Paul wrote this, I just updated the date. We had, we had gone to CPA before, looking for funding for the fields.
Right.
So, so there's nothing, you don't have to wait, I'm just pointing out, you don't have to wait till July. As soon as it's approved, I will send it over to CPA and request that they put it on their next meeting agenda. And then what's very helpful, and Paul may be able to speak to this, school committee went last time, the more of a showing we have, the more favorably CPA typically receives a request.
So we're, we're looking to make an ask of CPA for, they have an August timeline, is that correct, to get it to the October town meeting?
That's correct. The CPA request we're looking for is $400,000 from CPA. The total project cost for Phase One would be $511,375, and that's deferring the fencing, that's why it's different. And so when you take out the fencing, since, I want to pee and I can't remember what that stands for.
The high netting, so the number 11.
Thank you. Overhead and profit goes down, because it's a percentage of project cost.
And that's the netting that it butts the, runs below to the Maple Street.
Mill Street.
Mill Street, sorry. Thank you. And so one of the key things too is, we'd want to go to the CPA, not just with the, this team here, to show the unified expertise and interest from the community, but also see if we can raise the additional funds to show some, some skin in the game. So Eric Sudnikson and Annie have done a great job already talking about how we would do that, going to folks like the trustees and Helping Hearts and Mothers Club, but also going to local businesses, thanks and such. And one of the things we talked about is signage and advertising, so can we put up advertisements from Whole Foods in exchange for some funds?
And we have some school committee policies that pertain to that, and we will also be looking where we are, where the school committee is silent on that. We have examples from other districts, so I believe we have a policy subcommittee meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, sometime in June, I think policy subcommittee is meeting. I can't remember who's on policy subcommittee. Okay. And so we would also be looking at policies there, so that when we approach people who might be willing to give a considerable or more money in exchange for advertising or signs, that we'd have a policy on that.
Cast a question on this?
Sure.
On the description of opinion of probable cost, at one point, I know when we were thinking about going to CPA for the original ask of the $50,000 that we had talked about, exactly as you described, that they're going to want to know, what else have we done to try to, you know, bring, you know, put some skin in the game, same thing. So you've listed some organizations, but some of the things we also had talked about was potentially, you know, donations of either people with equipment, or people with materials, or people with hours, labor, like those kinds of things. Is there a way to include that in here? Either, are they reflected in any of the prices, like we're getting a discount on pavers and bricks because of the local, or?
Yeah, so this is Berkshire Designs, and these aren't even estimates, right? These are, I mean, they're not even bids. So they're based on their professional opinion. We did talk about volunteer labor, and I know that's something the community's interested. It's hard to fit it into this type of project, was the feedback we got, both from the design company and some of the maintenance experts there. So I think we would constantly look for opportunities for folks to do that, a planting day, so maybe there are materials we can get, but some of the stuff is general earthwork, and, you know, that's stuff best left to the professionals. So we didn't itemize that here. But, and there are aspects too, of once we get this approved, we can start now more specifically going and make asks, and that's something I know Eric has been itemizing as well.
Okay. We did, yeah, we did also talk about, so it wasn't that, which isn't, Paul, you're not saying this, I know that, that it wasn't a question of, okay, so therefore we can't use volunteers, because the, the, the project is so technical that it would not be good in terms of liability, in terms of getting your general contractor to take on the job and say, what do you mean, I've got to use partial volunteers, I'm not doing that on my insurance. But we talked about the, the benefit of using volunteers, like Andy Klapacki was at the meeting, and he has a lot of experience around fundraising, and there are other people. So asking people to volunteer their talent and their time, particularly around helping us with fundraising strategies, and we have a lot of people in the community who know a great deal about that. So that was, that was one way of showing additional skin in the game. And the other thing that we talked about is that the school department, and we'll have to be very clear with the CPA, with the town, and with everybody, that this will have long-term implications for the school department budget. Our existing maintenance staff cannot be, cannot just add these, maintenance of these fields, and it's not as simple as another pass with a lawnmower. And Dan Markowski was the one who was very clear about that.
Right.
That this isn't just going to be added to the to-do list of existing staff. So it will show up in the school department budget, in the maintenance budget, and that's the ongoing investment that the school department's making.
That's the conservation, that's a good point, thank you.
We earlier had to talk about school choice and recruiting and stuff like that. Are these new fields something that might entice people to look at Hadley? I'm not a sportster, I don't, I don't, I don't know how sports and people work, but I just, like, could it be also looked at as a long-term investment?
I think so, and if you look at the Chinese immersion charter school, its expansion bid, it wants to expand its seats so that it'll be easier for it to get funding, to find a different space, and what they're really looking at is making sure they find a space with athletic fields. So talk about the writing on the wall in terms of also your, some of your school choice, that's a very good point.
So thank you for mentioning, Annie, that the way folks can be involved, I think there are, Eric Sudnik's working on some fundraising ideas, volunteers, opportunities for donations. So if folks are interested, they can contact Eric, can contact me, I'm happy to help as well. I think that's all the kind of stuff we're trying to put together, so that, assuming we get school committee approval, we can take, take that all to CPA.
And that, just again to underscore, people don't have to hear, it's not if you want to donate money, I mean, that's great too, we can set up, we had already talked about in the athletic revolving account, that we can earmark that specifically if people want to donate to the fields project, but if they have ideas about fundraising. I already heard some great ones at the PTO, things I just didn't know about how you can partner with Gillette, perhaps asking some of our athletes to go out to Gillette Stadium, sell concessions, and they do that as volunteers, but Gillette then turns around and gives money to a project. But Gillette then turns around and gives money to a project, and there are school districts in it that are closer to Gillette, that that is a tremendous fundraiser for them, tremendous. So that's example, I had no idea until a PTO parent told me that. So if there are folks who have ideas about how to fundraise, please, contact Paul, contact Eric, send an email to me, we're very interested.
Can I ask you a question about the wish list on this phase one? Can you, can you say anything about that? I uh I saw concession stands and restroom buildings, scoreboard, and I was reminded of the many baseball tournaments that we've gone uh to with my oldest son, who, like, throughout the state, but also in the broader region, Connecticut and Vermont and other such places. Hosting those kinds of tournaments is a big boost for the area. We have a a great hotel and meals tax that the the town benefits from when, and we've seen consistently, you know, like, great bookings when we host things like that. What, have we explored the potential for all the revenue generation that could take place with the addition of things like that?
That's a good point, no, I mean, the benefit to the town, we haven't. We've talked about the amount concessions can bring into the school. Uh so, and I I would say, you know, in our conversation, I'm hoping the concession and the restroom are, that's a, that's a pretty elevated cost, because I think you put those together in the same building.
Yeah.
On the slope we have there, so that what the designers think is you put it embedded into the slope, and so you'd have concessions, restrooms, but also you'd have a way for a platform viewing area.
Yes.
So handicap accessible up there, reporter accessible.
Right.
So he's got, we've got visions, it was just more than we wanted to bite off on the first page.
And and don't get me wrong, it's like more than just like the hot dog sales that we could get from, like, people coming to events. It's like a hundred dollar room rate for a four-day event with a whole family who's going out to eat at Applebee's all again long. It just has this ripple effect on the community. I've spent plenty of money in other. I didn't even think about that.
It's a telling point when we take it to town meeting.
Definitely. To pitch it to the town, I hadn't even thought about that. That's great. So, great. Do, and I'm not trying to brush you all, I mean, does any, would you like to? Is, is this something you wanna take to CPA?
I think, I think we, we've uh, we've put their first set of monies to really good use, we're ready. I think I hear from the town that it's a project that's really ready to, for execution. And uh experiencing uh what my kids are going through on the varsity side, clearly the fields are needed. So I I would be in favor of uh going to CPA and attending that meeting alongside.
Great.
Me too.
So do you, if it's okay, if you take a motion on that, on the, written up the notes, but the request, the page after the notes as written, is what would be submitted to CPA, I never wanna do that unilaterally, so if you want to, it's under action items as a possibility.
So that's at five hundred and eleven, which is the space one cost minus the ninety-six thousand, and we took a commensurate reduction in the OMP. So that would allow us to submit this proposal to CPA, we plan, we organize, keep working on the fundraising strategy with whatever ideas we can get, and we've already got a bunch, and then plan on taking that to CPA. And their meeting is in September.
Well, as soon as I, as soon as you approve it, so if you approve it tonight, I will hand deliver it tomorrow to David Nixon, and I'll leave it in Edwin Matuska's mailbox and email him and let him know it's there, and then they'll email me and tell me when they're ready.
Is Edwin still the chair?
That's what it says on the website, I'm not sure if he has.
I've heard he, there's a different chair.
So I'll make sure. So I'll give it to David.
Yeah, okay.
And um and then they typically email me and say, this is one more meeting.
Okay.
Motion to apply for CPA funding and meet with the CPA board.
Second. All fair?
Hi.
Great. Thank you.
Great.
It's become the wheel.
I know, it's great. So just a, just a note on the, you got the policy committee coming up, but it'd be good to talk about the signage, and then we had that also, that other athletic question about operating, practicing on school days.
So fundraising, signage, what was the other one?
Uh, the school, no, uh, no school, no practice policy, which is in the package we do.
Yeah, that's right, okay. Great. All right, next, uh, grade three civics and communicating with state government.
Yes, so these are just wonderful, I wanna highlight the great work that our students do to the active citizens. I gave you copies of some letters from our third graders, and one of our education support professionals who's working with our third graders and encouraged them to write to their honorable Governor Baker about issues that they think Governor Baker should make a priority. One of our third graders wrote to the governor about homelessness and would like to see the governor address that issue. Another third grader um talked about how unhealthy cigarette smoking is and would like to see the governor address that problem. And all of them are, I think, words, but of course homelessness, one of our students pointed out that homelessness is not just about people, but also about animals. And so certainly we need to be looking at animal shelters as well. So we sent these off to Governor Baker, and I am hoping and believing that Governor Baker's office will be responding to our third graders. I will keep you posted as to what happens with animal shelter, cigarette smoking, and homelessness. And in addition to that, we also have very active other young elementary students. So they don't know that I'm bringing this, but I want the, our HES students who submitted a petition to me, or several petitions, where they signed, because they want the town to do something about recycling, and they want, of course, us to do something about recycling, um to make sure that, preferably, that we have a single stream option. Single stream isn't the language that they use, but let's make this easy, and let's make sure that recycling um happens in all town departments. So I have contacted the director of the DPW, and I will tell you in first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth graders. I'll tell you definitely when those lower elementary students speak, I listen, I'm listening. So I already made an appointment, and I have a meeting with the town administrator and the director of the DPW, and I will be reporting back. So first grade, second grade, third grade, you hold me accountable, I will deliver.
That's, that's great.
That's awesome.
That's fabulous.
Yeah.
All right, uh, personal report.
You, we still, uh, we have posted and interviewed and will be, I hope to have the ABA technician to you in your next report. Summer school, we've been actively hiring for our summer school positions, and we did have a resignation of an educational support professional. As I said, we just won't fill that position, so that we don't have to do a reduction force out of preschool.
Okay. That's all our presentation and discussion items, any public comment? Pat, you want to say anything? Great, all right, uh, business manager report. Chris.
Okay, so we have, excuse me, three reports, um, the first is a summary of the local expenditures. You know, basically nine pages of of detail, but really the items we wanna look at are on page nine. And that is the grand total line where you can see for the final month or so of school, we've got five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars left to spend, um, and we have another hundred and fifty-seven about encumbered, which means we have, we know we're getting these bills, we've already put the money aside for them. So we're, we're looking very good, certainly, with this. There's one payroll that was just posted, and it's not included in this, that was a couple hundred thousand, so we technically have about three hundred and seventy left, I suppose, um, since it was done after this report was run. Typically, the final payroll runs around maybe six hundred and fifty thousand dollars because of people that get paid throughout the summer, and it all hits on this last paycheck. So um as, as you might think, uh-oh, we're spending more than we have, but we have all that school choice money that was appropriated yet that we have not applied at all. So what we will do is basically, you know, write it out right up until June thirtieth, and then transfer the appropriate number of expenses um to school choice in early July to bring our balance back to zero. I don't foresee us using the entire six eighty-one of school choice, so that's certainly a good thing, yeah, so. And that's why really, when, when Anne mentioned bringing you school choice numbers, we'll have that firmed up, we will have the state numbers firmed, firmed up in terms of sped increment that we're going to get, and we'll be able to give you an actual number, um, rather than, you know, estimates that we're giving you right now, so.
So that's at June or is that at July?
That would be in July, yeah.
July, okay.
Yeah.
So Chris, I'm sorry, on page nine.
Yes.
Five seventy-seven is available, one fifty-seven, that is to come out of the five seventy-seven?
No, that's, that's in addition to, the five seventy-seven is net of that, so that's why, you know, if you look at it, we know those bills are coming. They're sped tuition bills that we set aside at the beginning of the year for every month's worth of them. And um, you know, that's, that's the majority of it, um, there's also some uh energy costs involved in that, some of which are are slightly over encumbered, we brought that down considerably actually since the last meeting. A couple of weeks ago, we had about six hundred and fifty thousand encumbered, so we brought that down quite a bit by closing purchase orders that we had finished with, and there was money left over. I think we closed about seventy-five purchase orders, so we, we really, you know, have been quite busy with that. And um what's left here is is pretty close, I think electricity is still, we just, we did not use as much electricity as we thought we would. So, you know, we have that a little bit extra as well. That will all kind of filter out as we get the final bills in, um, but I'm, I'm breathing easy um this month, so it's, it's looking good. And the grant report on the next page is uh is similar to this, where again, we're closing in on the end of the year, grants are getting used up, there's, let's see, there's three of them now that have been entirely used. There are some more that are just about all used, uh, they certainly will be, title one is all salary. So with that final June payroll in a couple of weeks, that'll all be used, as will the three ninety-one grant for preschool. And then the rest of them are, you know, are small amounts that certainly will be used up. Circuit breaker, I changed it around a little bit because of questions that were brought up at the last meeting, where it was asked that, gee, we're going to carry over more money than we, than than is shown here. So rather than having, I believe it was about a hundred and forty-nine thousand that we were awarded for this year, I changed it to include the carryover from last year, which was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Plus, we received um almost a hundred and twenty thousand in extraordinary relief for this year, so that's all been added together, and that's why the amount has grown so substantially from what you saw before. And it's showing a hundred and thirty-eight thousand carried over now. Again, when we get to the end of the year, we can certainly transfer expenses out of circuit breaker back into the local budget as well to, you know, carry over as much as possible in that area. And, oh. Have to rotate again so I don't have to stand on my head. So we have the revolving accounts report, um, a little bit of um a change in this one, you can see the asterisks in, on April thirtieth. For the lunch account, the revenues that we get, reimbursement from the state, didn't come in until May second. So what that showed was a rather scary figure of, it was seventy-eight hundred dollars we got, so add seventy-eight hundred dollars to the negative balance, and we had a negative balance of over thirteen thousand. Rather than give everyone a heart attack until I actually spoke with you, I thought I would just add that May second revenue to it. It, it was just, it just so happened that April thirtieth, I believe, was on a Saturday or a Sunday, so it didn't actually come in until after the weekend was over, and and so that's the result. We also already received the May one as well, so we just got two revenues in May. I only included the first one in that number to kind of just, you know, keep it right. So really, we're looking pretty good as far as school lunch, I mean, it's always running at a deficit, last year's deficit, and I think the year before us too, was pushing twenty thousand, so, you know, it's the end of May or end of April on this report, and we're fifty-four hundred. That's not so bad.
So Chris, I'm sorry, what was that, you said a revenue of seventy-eight hundred dollars came in?
Yeah, we get reimbursement from the state, and, you know, every month it comes in, usually right at the end of the month, and this particular one just didn't come in until May second, so. But like I said, I mean, at first, when I, I got the report from the town hall and I emailed Justin back, and I said, how is it that we lost so much money in April? Are all the revenues posted? And he said, yes, they are. And and so I said, well, can I have a transaction journal so I can look at all the revenues? And that's when I looked, and I said, well, there's no state revenue here, and, and so he was correct, they were all posted, it's just that it hadn't come yet, so. You know, once I saw that, it's.
After we were singing all your praises about you came back and the lunch account was flushed, and then you dipped to negative thirteen.
Yes, that's, that's all my fault, it is. And that's all I have.
All right.
Right.
Okay. All right, moving on to school committee reports, so first, policy. We've just talked about, we've got a meeting scheduled at some point in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, I thought, am I making this up?
All right, and we've got um some topics to address for that, but no other updates from us on that one. All right, finance, tri-board, capital, and facilities.
I think it's uh capital that I know over the air conditioners for the elementary school.
And so the air conditioners, yeah, Chris can give a little bit better update on that.
So we. He speaks about buses, he knows about air conditioners.
And he's not an electrician. I learned that last month.
So um we did hire an outside firm to handle the plans for the air conditioning system. They will also handle the bidding, which means when those complicated, uh, complicated questions that I tried to answer last time come in, I won't have to worry about not knowing the answers this time, because they'll go right to them. And, you know, they'll, they'll handle that whole process. He was supposed to come and pick up the plans for the elementary school this week, so we have them ready in the central office for him to pick up. And um I told him, you know, we'd still like to get this done over the summer, so I'm hoping that kind of keeps him moving a little bit.
Thanks, Chris.
And uh, that's where we stand.
Good.
Good, great.
So that'll be part of the four hundred thousand uh allocated by the state.
That's correct, yes.
By the town.
Yep.
Actually, I will send an email now.
Is there a tri-board meeting scheduled?
No, not that I know of. Inform me, I haven't received an email.
Okay, anything else on the fields? You give us an update.
That's it.
All right, um, negotiations, proud to say we've reached a settlement today.
Wow, congratulations.
This morning.
Yeah.
So next steps are, Fred will create the final contract document that will go to, it's not a union, is it, union?
It is, it is.
Union.
Yeah, it is.
For their.
Association, yeah.
They'll review it, um, vote on it before it comes back to us. So one of the things that we'll talk about when we talk about next regular meeting date is we need to go through that in executive session, have an executive session, and then come into an open session to, for our vote on that. So we'll handle that in, we need to do it by the end of June, so we don't wanna push it too late, given that it has to all be done before the end of this fiscal year, since it is retroactive beginning this fiscal year, this current one, and then the next three, right, so three years.
Yep.
So that's good, and then otherwise though, negotiations, you mentioned we've got uh different folks leading, we're the different.
So at the June twenty-second meeting, we will have an executive session meeting before we go into regular session, and at, we'll start at the same time, at five thirty for executive session, and that will be just to do ground rules. And I know different people are on different uh negotiation subcommittees, A, C, and D. The ground rules will be very similar, they'll probably be exactly the same, because the Massachusetts Teachers Association, HEA, represents all three of those units. So the president of the HEA will be in executive session, will review the ground rules, and um hopefully come to a tentative agreement on ground rules about how we'll proceed. That'll happen, that meeting, and so everyone can come to that executive session, because it should not take very long, and they can take care of all ground rules at once.
Would we also have David Nixon at that session?
Not when doing the ground rules, but when, back to the negotiation, settling the contract. So when the contract after labor votes, and then it comes back to the school committee for a vote, the, a representative of the town, so David Nixon will be invited to that meeting. And David Nixon also has one vote, I believe, or the town has one vote.
Okay, so we'll need a separate executive session with David for the. Okay, so we'll need a separate executive session with David for the bus driver.
No, actually you can do that all together, your executive session.
If he's available.
Right, so if I get some dates, that folks would be available and I can actually again do that via, you know, because I just realized my phone will die by now.
Okay.
So, and David would come to that meeting. So the negotiations would be, as long as we have a quorum present, either Humira, Heather or both of them, if everybody's available, would walk through the contract and the school committee needs to vote, the entire school committee needs to vote before it can be considered ratified on this end. And one of those, I do believe the town actually, should they choose to, gets a vote on that. I'll verify whether or not they have an actual vote or they're just invited to be present.
Okay.
By the entire school committee, you mean all those in attendance?
The quorum.
Okay, so I know we had a quorum for the 22nd, which was the last day of school, which is fine.
So if David's available that day, let's try to do both, an exec session first?
Okay, all right.
Might as well.
You really scheduled it for the last day of school?
Yeah, sorry, I made that happen.
I did, didn't I?
We need to.
Okay. CES, Humira.
Great, I went to the last CES board meeting, which was this last Wednesday, and we reviewed, I think I might have mentioned that the executive director's review and contract and all that was going on and we successfully concluded that entire process and, yeah, I have nothing but praise for the executive director. He manages an amazingly large and complex organization and does so with such skill and grace. You two did not have the pleasure of meeting him, he was here in person just about, I want to say in November or December, and he's always willing to come back, he's doing a circuit of presentations to all the area school committees. And so just a couple of things to glean from this last meeting, aside from all of that, there was a great, a document in my packet about how much, like we pay $3.50 per student to participate in CES. And so overall ours, our bill is kind of small relative to other area schools that have many more students, but we derive such great benefit from the array of services that they provide. And I'll pass around this very colorful document of other towns and what kinds of services they leverage from CES. And you'll notice that Hadley is pretty comparable for towns of its size and it really just allows us to go in on services that we can't gain access to alone and participate alongside other towns and have the collaborative organize those services for us. And they're very quite responsive to also to emerging needs and designing new services around those emerging needs. But one of the things I noticed from our most recent packet was the, as Annie mentioned earlier, declining enrollments across the board and some schools just hit quite hard, you know, 126 declining, decrease in count from fiscal year 16 to 17 at Granby, 126. Ours is 58 in comparison. And we're always comparing ourselves to Granby and other towns. There are very few towns who have seen an increase. Sunderland, for some interesting reason, is one of those towns. I would be interested in understanding what's going on in Sunderland, because I also consider them to be somewhat comparable agricultural, rural, small school. That would be something interesting to look at. East Hampton, Pelham, those are communities that are on the upturn, but generally by and large, decreased, Smithville, of course, ever on the increase of 56 new enrollments. But overall, the message is, you know, we're not alone. This is just declining enrollments, population in general and not just in our region, but also across the nation. And then the only other thing to report is that there are some bills at state legislature for augmenting declining tax, tax income that gets passed on to schools. And so there's momentum around a number of them, one in particular, I don't know the specifics, but I've asked Annie to connect with Bill when she speaks with him next to find out if there's anything we should do. The one suggestion was to talk with your local representatives. I mentioned to Cybok that we were aware that something was brewing and we're eager to have his support, ongoing support of the schools, which he has been historically. That's it.
And because of your report, I'm reminded, we will be meeting this Friday, I have a meeting with representatives from CES and with the district attorney's office here. So I called them and asked if we could talk about how do we create a proactive approach to the things that we've seen most recently in the paper going on in East Hampton? How do we, we've talked about this, how do we educate children and how do we support families? And CES would be a good partner in that work because they are good at tackling problems regionally and coordinating efforts. So we're going to, also Officer Romano is going to that meeting with me. So our goal is to brainstorm all of the various stakeholders, people who may have unmet needs around education and support and resources, children, parents, schools, law enforcement, and then start crafting a coordinated, regional, proactive response or effort to educate children, educate and support families and help children and, and law enforcement talk about and figure out what's the line between First Amendment rights and personal responsibility and responsibility and speech. So we have that meeting Friday and CES is participating in that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, an added topic is the MASK Summer Institute, which apparently is taking place at Beach in Marlboro. Do you define a beach in Marlboro?
Yeah, that is kind of false advertising.
The palm trees in Marlboro too.
Cybok is the best.
Yes, palm trees.
There's a pond.
With a palm tree.
It is in centrally located air-conditioned rooms here. But no, this just came out, you may have gotten an email through the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. They will send you various information on things like the charting the course, course that you do have to take within your first year of coming onto a school committee, which goes through everything, including, you know, your role as a school committee member, but also the ethics and legal aspects that they cover. It's great, it's a really interesting course. But as part of this workshop, there's six courses that they're offering and the way I read it was that you actually can take all six sessions, not that you have to choose, but I could be wrong on that. But it seemed like very relevant and kind of timely information. We were just talking about goal setting, we were just talking about bills and ESSA and new laws and we were just talking about family engagement, you know, you've got finance and budgets in there and just, I think, some really relevant topics. So it sounds like with $75 covering the two-day registration that we are able to send as many of us as want to go, yeah. I'm definitely interested in going and because it is local enough, you know, it doesn't require an overnight, given that they end the Friday at 6:00 PM. So it's very reasonable. So I think if, how would you like to handle if folks want to go? Go through you or go directly to MASK?
So probably I would say they could register directly to MASK, let us know so we can do a PO, we'd want to make sure we encumber the funds now. So if you simply shoot an email, yes, I intend to go for two days, we'll create a purchase order for everybody, but because they're individual registrations, they'll give you a badge and things like that. If you register individually, you can check bill the school district, let us know and then we'll generate a PO and ASC will send us the bill.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, no problem. All right, and then there's two action items still remaining, creation of a diversity club account within student activities.
Can you speak to that? Or the diversity club? So anytime we create a new account, we have a student activity called our diversity club and they want to fundraise. And so within our student activities funds, they want their own separate place to deposit the funds that they raise and that always requires school committee approval, right? The dissolution or creation of an account.
So, yeah, basically it's, it's under the entire student activities account that I report on monthly in the revolving accounts report, but within that one student activity account, there are probably, well, 25 maybe, subaccounts. And this would just be an additional account there where D actually keeps track of them and keeps all of the balances in the subaccounts that then balance out with the bank for the total account. So, yeah, anytime we open a new, one of the student activity accounts or any other kind of account, gift accounts or anything like that, we need school committee approval, so just getting that.
Then who has authority over this? How do they get money and who can spend it?
Well, the student activity accounts are, they're not funded with town money or anything like that, they're all fundraised funds. Or donations either way. And it has to be used for the benefit of the students, so someone can't just come along and say, I want a new smart board for my class or something like that, you know, they have to, you know, use it for the funds that, what they were intended for. Usually it would be the advisor of the organization that would spend the money with, you know, if the organization has officers with the treasurer.
With the student.
And they would approve the funds. And then D is the one that signs the checks and they have to be co-signed as well, so there's a lot of dual control involved with that.
Yeah, the depositing, the internal controls are very good on student activity funds. The advisor has to bring the money to the office, the secretary, most student activity funds are of the high school. One of the admin assistants checks off, initials the deposit, then the admin assistant brings it to the principal who initials that same deposit, then it comes over to D Rex, who initials and finalizes the deposit. So that's to prevent, like, six people would have to say, you know what, let's lose our jobs over 50 bucks. So a lot of people have to sign off on the same amount and then spending the money, similar process, advisor, principal, D, and then signed by D and Chris or I before the money is spent.
I think this is the logical next step for the diversity club. Certainly it's an important asset to the school now going into its second year. It's been in operation for a full year, so it's great to see them fundraising and beginning to manage money. I'd be happy to motion to approve creation of that diversity club account within the student activities fund.
Let me just ask Chris a quick question. So you said that, is it true, any club, any elective group, they would all be lumped into a student account? So there's a precedent for this, that there's other clubs?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Great. Yep, they're all in there. Yep, great. I agree with you. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, and the last one, acceptance of Subaru Loves Learning.
And I was saying, since Tara and Keith came, you are just donation acceptors. I said last month, this occasionally happens, look at that. Everybody wants to donate now. So the riveting work of the school committee to say, sure, we'll take that. And Subaru Loves Learning is, thank you Subaru, is giving us many, many, many books, two pages worth of books, so they gave us a school district book package and are delivering those to the elementary school. These are to augment the curriculum, things like A Beetle is Shy, Tooth by Tooth, Comparing Fangs, Tusks and Chompers. I gotta get that for my brother.
I read it, it's just riveting.
It just sounds like we would spend hours in having soft art fun or bugging fun.
So is that Steve Lewis in Subaru?
Oh, I thought you meant the author, I'm like, really? I've not got a feeling for her, but it does sound pretty good.
Yes, it is Steve Lewis Subaru.
So we should just say thanks, they are so generous.
They are, they are generous.
All right, is there a motion?
To accept, to accept the donation.
Tooth by tooth.
I'll move to accept the donation of books from Subaru Loves Learning.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, next meeting, so that's the 22nd, we're going to start at 5:30 in executive session and then come, so that just means we go into a separate room, then it's not filmed and then we come back out here for opening.
Where is said second room?
Well, you open the meeting here.
That's true.
You open the meeting here, so you'll aggregate here and then you'll go elsewhere.
Usually.
Captain, a little.
There's a secret handshake.
Just come here. Okay, and let's see, and we'll include the bus driver negotiations in there, all right. Anything else before we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn the session.
Seconded.
All in favor? All right. Thank you.